Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order. It's the regular meeting of the Delanco Board of Education. It is January 6th at 7:04 PM. Can I have a moment of silence, please? And can everybody salute the flag?
Gotcha.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America
And to the republic
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, Okay, so I will do the oath of office now. I'm gonna do it in alphabetical order, so when I call your name, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Mr. Robert Dovey Jr. Can you unmute your speaker? Your microphone? Bottom left of your screen, maybe? There you go.
Got it. Sorry about that.
That's okay. I state your name.
I D. Robert Dovey Jr.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And then I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States and this state.
And to the governments established in the United States and in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I state your name.
I D. Robert Dovey Jr.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
For the office of member of a board of education.
Let's see. Of member of the Board of Education.
And not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 19:4-1.
And that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 19:4.
And not disqualified due to conviction of a crime.
Nor disqualified due to a conviction of a crime.
Or offense listed in NJ SA 18A:12-1.
Or offense listed in NJ SI 18A:12-1.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Congratulations on your election.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Mr. Stephen McLaughlin?
Hi.
Hi. I state your name.
I Stephen McLaughlin.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States and this state.
And to the governments established in the United States and this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I state your name.
I Stephen McLaughlin.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
For the office of member of a board of education.
For the office of a member of a board of education.
And not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 19:4-1.
And not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 19:4-1.
And not disqualified due to conviction of a crime.
And not disqualified due to conviction of a crime.
Or offense listed in NJ SA 18A:12-1.
Or offense listed in NJ SA 18A:12-1.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly.
Perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability.
Perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability.
Congratulations on your election.
Thank you.
And Mrs. Catherine Tursickeely.
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, where did you go? There you are, okay. I state your name.
I Catherine Tursickeely.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States and this state.
And to the governments established in the United States and this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I state your name.
I Catherine Tursickeely.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
For the office of member of a board of education.
For the office of member of a board of education.
And not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 19:4-1.
And not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 19:4-1.
And not disqualified due to conviction of a crime.
And not disqualified due to conviction of a crime.
Or offense listed in NJ SA 18A:12-1.
Or offense listed in NJ SA 18A:12-1.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly.
Perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability.
Perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations on your election.
Congratulations.
Okay, so you're gonna do a roll call vote, a roll call? Mr. Calligwar?
Yeah.
Ms. Darmo?
Yeah.
Mr. Dovey?
Here.
Mr. Cameron Jenkins?
Present.
Mr. Phil Jenkins?
Here.
Mrs. Karen Menugian?
Here.
Mr. Litwack?
Here.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Here.
Mrs. Tursickeely?
Yeah.
I will get that down. Reading a statement of adequate notice. Notice of this meeting pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act has been given as follows. Advertising in the Burlington County Times and the Carrier Post on January 30th, 2020. Posting on school bulletin boards and main entrance doors on December 23rd, 2020. Sending a notice to the Burlington County Times and the Carrier Post on December 23rd, 2020. Filing written notice with the Clerk of Delanco Township on December 23rd, 2020. Posting the notice electronically on the district website, www.delanco.com on December 23rd, 2020. And now I would like to open it up for nominations for the Board President.
Okay, this is Phil. I would like to nominate Marissa Karen Menugian for Board President. And the reason why, within this last year, we've had a tremendous amount of things going on. Marissa has been right next to me, working with me, and she has been a total part of what's going on with where we're at. There. I cannot think of a person that is more qualified to be president than Marissa. That's why I'd like to make the nomination.
I'd like to second the nomination. This is.
Harry.
Harry, I'd like to second the nomination of Marissa.
Thank you.
I think.
Are there any other nominations?
John, as President.
Thank you.
I nominate myself, Vera Darmo, for Board President. The reason is, I've been a teacher for about 20 years. I'm the only one who has experience in the remote environment that we're now in. I've gotten the budget packet for public viewing. I've worked with our present board members in the past to get our meetings on video. And I believe I have the qualifications to be Board President after being on the Board of Year.
This is Vince, I'll second.
Okay. Do I have any other nominations? For Board President? Okay, hearing there are no further nominations, the floor is closed for nominations for Board President. Mr. Mersinger, did you go over with the board members? How they should perceive their vote?
So, thank you. Now, although the board agenda says "roll call vote", that's actually not accurate. It should say simply that the board will vote by written ballot. It is not a secret ballot in that the votes are not hidden once they're shared with the public. So, for example, if a board member votes for anyone, they have to state their name as the voter, state who they're voting for and for what office on the written ballot. So, the way that we're doing it this year, because we're not in person, is that we would use emails that would be sent to Vicky LaSalle and myself, and one sent to me basically as a failsafe just in case Vicky doesn't receive the messages or something. So, those votes would be official written votes, just like a written vote would happen on a piece of paper. This has been confirmed with our board solicitor. So, that is the default method of voting, is the written ballot. So, without further ado, since Mrs. LaSalle is presiding, are we ready to have the board members submit their votes?
Yes, board members, please cast your vote.
How does this get done? I need help. I need help.
Harry, you said that you need help?
Yeah.
In what way? How can we help?
Where do I go to vote? How do I get off of where I am?
So, you're in the Zoom meeting right now, but if you have it at full screen, it might be harder to see other things that are available to you.
No, I just have it in four blocks.
If you minimize it, you should be able to access.
Mr. Mersinger?
Yep.
Maybe for Harry, maybe. I mean, would it still be acceptable if he texted it as well? Would that be easier for him?
Any type of written vote is acceptable, according to the solicitor, as long as it's confirmed that the vote is indeed from that person.
Can I text Vicky?
You absolutely could, if that's the only option that you have.
Well, I think that would be the most expeditious.
Yeah.
Vicky, what number?
Fine with that, as long as the presiding officer, the current presiding officer, is fine with that. Simply because the solicitor said that if we're doing a written ballot, that as long as we know and can confirm from the person.
It needs to be in writing.
Well, it needs to be in writing unless the board really wanted it to be a voice vote, but that's not necessarily the.
I just texted Mr. Litwack.
Yeah, I got it. And so.
Mine just got bounced back to me. This is Robert. My vote says, "Address not found."
V. LaSalle@delanco.com?
Bob, are you using your district email or your personal email?
My personal email. I haven't set up for my district email.
All right, I'll send you something and say, "Reply to this."
Okay.
Reply all?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm wondering if.
Would have been much easier doing it verbally.
Yeah, would be much easier to have this in person, too.
So true.
Yeah.
Even though you said it bounced, Bob, I did receive a vote from you.
Oh, well, yeah, yours is good.
It was Vicky's, okay.
Vicky's. I think, for some reason, the address, it was saved in my system, but I think it's dropping a little better.
So, at this moment, I've received five votes, so votes from five board members. So, I'm not sure if Vicky has received all nine. And I could take this moment. You have seven, okay. I could take this moment to let everyone know that, you know, when the board votes for a president, you know, we have two nominees tonight, but if there are more than two nominees, it actually creates certain challenges when it comes to the process because it could hinder the possibility of getting a majority if you have three candidates and each one gets three votes, for example, or one gets four votes, and the majority is five votes, at least. So, that's the rule, according to our policy.
And they battle it out.
Discussing this with our solicitor, it's interesting that plurality votes, meaning not a majority, but a plurality, meaning just simply having the highest number of votes, can also be accepted at times, depending on what your policy says. So, it's an interesting topic. I've been exploring it, but no matter what, I've now received six votes. How about you, Vicky? Based on my count, Vicky, you might have eight votes at this point, or, sorry, seven votes.
Seven, seven.
Yeah, Vicky may have mine, but Joe, I didn't send it to you.
Okay, understood.
I just got eight.
And then, once all the votes are received, then Vicky will read them aloud. That's why I said it's not officially a secret ballot. It's just done this way, so that early votes will not impact later votes.
Bob, did you get the email from Joe?
Yes, I thought he passed on my vote to you.
Yeah, I can forward it.
Okay.
And that will still be official. Yep, we're good.
Okay, so I'll read them in the order that they came in.
Perfectly fine. Did you receive all nine?
Yes. I thought I did. Did you forward, Bobs?
Yes, just a couple seconds ago.
Okay, I have nine now.
All right.
Okay, so Ms. Darmo votes for Ms. Darmo. Mr. Calligwar votes for Ms. Darmo. Mr. Phil Jenkins votes for Marissa. Mrs. Cameron Menugian. Mr. Cameron Jenkins votes for Mrs. Karen Menugian. Mr. McLaughlin votes for Ms. Darmo. Mrs. Karen Menugian votes for Mrs. Karen Menugian. Mrs. Tursickeely, did I do that right that time? Votes for Ms. Darmo. Mr. Mr. Dovey votes for Mrs. Karen Menugian. And Mr. Litwack votes for Mrs. Karen Menugian. Mrs. Karen Menugian has five votes. Ms. Darmo has four. So, Mrs. Karen Menugian is the new president.
Congratulations, Marissa.
Congratulations, Marissa.
Congratulations on your election.
Thank you.
I'd like to open the board, the vote for, the nominations for Vice President.
I'd like to nominate Catherine Tursickeely for Vice President of the Board. The reason I'm doing that, she's a mother. She has a young child. She's going to be proactive. And what I really care about, because I think this district is in a financial crisis, is she knows how to look at financial data. That's what we really need. She's done a lot with her husband to foster relationships between the community and the school. And I know she's very organized and meticulous. She'll be a great Vice President.
I'll second that nomination.
I would like to place the name of Cameron Jenkins in nomination for Vice President due to his, I guess, experience in the past year and also the fact that he is bringing a perspective of a local student who went through the school system, bringing that experience to the table.
And this is Phil, and I will second that.
I'll nominate Harry Litwack. I know that he was interested as well in running for Vice President. I would nominate him because he has years of experience. He has a lot of educational background in the financial aspect of it and in the curriculum and academics.
Hey, are there any further nominees for Vice President?
And just to note for everyone, there was a nomination and a second for most of them, but a second is actually not required per policy. So, it's not required per policy. So, we have a situation which three candidates are nominated. What this could mean is that we do not arrive at a majority, depending on the way the votes fall. If that happens, we need to repeat the process until we arrive at a majority. If we can't arrive at a majority through this process, then the executive county superintendent for Burlington County actually makes the decision. So, what I would say is a word of caution to all the board members that, as much as I respect those who work in the county, it would be my preference that we do not have them make the decision for our local board to determine who our Vice President is.
Are you in the board office, Joe? Joe, are you in the board office?
Yes, this is not a fake background.
Okay. We can't storm the board office to get what we want?
Harry, I know you're talking about world events, and I, yeah, there are definitely larger things at stake than.
It's the closest avenue.
I understand.
That may have gotten me, Harry.
But either way, yes, no. I'm hoping nobody storms the board office at this moment. In any event, I'm just saying that to the board so that we understand, however the votes fall, we might need to repeat the process, depending on that.
Okay, so we can vote now?
If the presiding officer is ready, then.
Yes.
Ready to.
There are no further nominations, so board members, please cast your vote for Vice President.
All right.
Okay. Mr. Litwack votes for Mr. Litwack.
See what we did there.
Ms. Darmo votes for Mrs. Tursickeely. Mr. McLaughlin votes for Mrs. Tursickeely. Mrs. Tursickeely votes for Mrs. Tursickeely. Mrs. Karen Menugian votes for Mr. Litwack. Mr. Cameron Jenkins votes for Mr. Jenkins. Mr. Phil Jenkins votes for Mr. Cameron Jenkins. Mr. Dovey votes for Mr. Jenkins. Mr. Calligwar votes for Mrs. Tursickeely. Mrs. Tursickeely has four votes. Mr. Jenkins has three, and Mr. Litwack has two. We do not have a quorum. Do not have a majority of the quorum, so we will need to cast another ballot. So, would you like to?
Well, prior to that, Vicky or Mrs. LaSalle, just to let board members know that any of the nominees can remove themselves from contention at any point, at which point, you know, we could have two people being voted upon, or one, or whatever, depending on what the candidates decide. So, Mrs. Tursickeely had the highest number of votes, but did not have five votes representing a majority of the full voting board. So, it's not impossible for that to happen on a second vote, as we know, but I just wanted to let everyone know that it is possible for any of the members that are nominated to remove themselves from contention. All right, well, it sounds like we're going to have to vote again.
Board members, please cast your vote.
Vicky, I'm driving through a dead zone right now, so if I start disconnecting and reconnecting, just be aware of that.
Okay.
Did you send your vote in, Cam?
Vicky, can you confirm if you got my email?
Literally just came in, okay.
Good, because this connection is real bad right now.
Got it. Okay, Mr. Litwack voted for Mr. Litwack. Mr. McLaughlin voted for Mrs. Tursich Keely. Mr. Dovey voted for Mr. Jenkins. Mr. Phil Jenkins voted for Mr. Jenkins. Mrs. Karen Minugian voted for Mr. Jenkins. Mr. Caligwarre voted for Mrs. Tursich Keely. Mrs. Tursich Keely voted for Mrs. Tursich Keely. Ms. Darmo voted for Mrs. Tursich Keely. And Mr. Cameron Jenkins voted for Mr. Jenkins. We have a tie at four for Mrs. Tursich Keely and Mr. Jenkins. Mr. Litwack has one vote.
Are your doors locked, Joe?
Yeah, they're locked. You need a swipe card to enter, so.
Let me get, let me get, let me get a coin to flip.
Well, all right, well, we have a tie vote. A tie vote is still considered a failure to elect, meaning, you know, we, we don't have the majority at this stage. It's still, it's not even a plurality at this stage because it's a tie. So we would move, we would either move to vote again. I, I would just say again, you know, any board member may remove themselves from contention.
Why don't you just do the easy thing and ask Harry what he'd like to do?
Because we have to have a vote.
Thanks.
And, and that's the way it's done. And by voting, so I'm going to flip a coin. Okay, I know who I'm voting for, maybe. I can abstain, can I not?
Okay, board members, please cast your vote for Vice President.
Can I abstain from voting?
Well, board, board members are permitted to abstain when they're conflicted or, you know, practice will show that abstentions can happen based on just not feeling comfortable with the, with voting, so.
I.
No, I called it in and it said you are muted. To unmute, press star six. I don't know, I don't get it. I turned that on and it went flying. I don't know where.
Well, anyhow, so we would have the third round of voting if you haven't already done so. And we do have the, the emails, you know, timestamps of which, which round everything's occurring in, so.
They can't hear you. He was just talking.
Now what?
Just waiting for one more.
This is certainly the most interesting vote I've seen in seven.
Yeah.
Mr. Dovey votes for Mr. Jenkins. Mrs. Karen Minugian votes for Mr. Jenkins. Ms. Darmo votes for Mrs. Tursich Keely. Mr. Caligwarre votes for Mrs. Tursich Keely. Excuse me for a second, I'm just making sure I'm reading the right ones.
Yeah, the, the newest ones, Vicky, should all be time stamped from seven.
Seven thirty.
Onward on, yeah.
Gmail. Thirty eight. Mr. McLaughlin votes for Mrs. Tursich Keely. I apologize for that delay. Mr. Mr. Cameron Jenkins votes for Mr. Jenkins. Mrs. Tursich Keely votes for Mrs. Tursich Keely. Mr. Phil Jenkins votes for Mr. Jenkins. Mr. Litwack abstains.
I would, I would, I would suggest in the next round, since I seem to be the bridge between two opposing forces, that two people from each of the sides decides to vote for me as a unifying person on the board from two distinct entities that seem to exist.
So Mr. Litwack, you're suggesting that they vote for you and give you the majority?
It's eternal. You know, so someone from either side gets off the seesaw.
Well, I don't get a vote, but I also don't foresee that happening.
Harry, I see you being the tiebreaker all year.
You're gonna have to start making a decision one way or the other.
Yeah, so.
You gotta make votes.
You are free to abstain, but if.
Folks, I've been patient for eight and nine years, trying to get stuff accomplished, and now's the time to do it. So I think that I know what I'm doing. I've been doing this stuff for 50 years because people have different political agendas. And at the moment, this sounds like it's the best idea, even though some people haven't educated themselves to how the school board system works. I'm, I'm saying, fine, I think I'm the person that should be the Vice President under the circumstances that exist.
Well, Harry, you're, you're, you are free to vote for yourself or abstain or vote for the other candidates. But if it remains deadlocked, then the Executive County Superintendent will decide. Have to say, we have to move forward and then let the county decide.
If, if neither one of the two sides or both of the sides can't move off their position, that's fine by me. That's fine by me. I'm saying that I present myself as someone with, that's worked in an honorable way to present information to the township, to the board. So if people can do it better, go ahead. If not, every round of voting, I'm either going to abstain or vote for myself. So I'm saying in advance that unless two people from each side throw in with me somehow by just voting for me, then let it go to the county superintendent and that's on the, everybody else on the board, not on me.
That's fine. County Superintendent.
For a political cause or for a certain group, I'm just trying.
I agree, Mr. Jenkins, let it go to county.
I think letting it go to the county, though, is that now this local board has given up its local control to elect its own officers. To me, that's a fundamental issue.
Well, it's quite obvious that, you know, we've got four people that want one person, four people that want another person, and one person that doesn't wish to vote. Let's let it go to the county. We still have a president right now who I think is very capable of running the show.
Bill, you're Mr. Representing my position. I said that I think I should be the person. And that could, would be one of the considerations that the county office would also consider.
Maybe they don't want you.
In my mouth or tell me what my position is. Or taint the, you know, the process. Please.
Well, Harry, you're saying that others could change their votes and give you the majority on.
It's not a.
Because the way the votes would be the one.
The president did that.
President changed her vote.
Oh, that's fine. I'm not saying that she couldn't change her vote. What I'm saying is I just don't foresee it considering the way the votes have gone. But what do I know? I don't, like I said, I don't get a vote. I just, I'm, I'm just observing the proceedings and helping to guide it.
Other than me, if, if it's a better system for me to just flip a coin, let it go to, to a person at least to make that decision. If the, if the town of Delanco doesn't want to make its own home rule, let it be it, let the county.
But Harry, I would make the case that you can make the decision tonight rather than having.
I voted for myself. I've abstained. No one else, other than the president, has moved off their position.
But more, the more authority that the county has to determine what happens in Delanco, the less authority this board has.
Which might be a good thing at this point.
That might be a good thing.
That might be a good thing at this point.
Can I suggest doing another round of voting? And just see if anybody, if, if whatever you have suggested has changed anybody's minds and then if that doesn't work.
Phil, you're the president. You, you know, you, you said county. I mean, the, the board's deciding this matter, right?
Well, we, we have a new president.
Marissa is the president.
Then I'm.
And, and my suggestion would be to vote again to see if there's any change in how people are feeling and how they want to vote to see, now knowing what we know to be true from the last three votes that we took, let's see what happens. And then if we're still the same impasse, then we'll have to go to the county of the superintendents for the determination.
I would just like to add that as a board member, we're supposed to be keeping in mind the will of the board, not the will of the individual. So just keep that in mind when you're making your vote.
You're here.
I need a little bit more practice saying your last name, so.
I don't know who said that. I don't know where that came from.
I said that, that was me, Catherine.
Okay, well, what do you mean by that?
Board members, can you please cast your vote for Vice President one more time?
Harry, you know what you would say about this? In any other circumstances, you would say that you're glad that the children are here to see democracy in action.
I would.
Many times.
This is, this is democracy in action.
Absolutely. And I know the children are waiting to hear their names announced for student recognition.
The children of.
In democracy.
So are bated breath, depending on who's going to be the school board Vice President.
Sorry, kids.
Okay, I have all the votes now. I'll start with Mr. Litwack. He votes for Mr. Litwack.
I'm in the lead. I'm in the lead. I won. Let's stop now. Let's stop now. I'm ahead. I think I won. Marissa, what do you think?
I don't know what to think. It's not done yet.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to keep the day in a sense of proportion.
Mr. Dovey, did you reply?
He did.
Did you type in your reply?
He sent a fourth vote. Vicky, look at the subject line. It says fourth vote.
Gotcha. Okay, sorry about that. Just want to make sure I have it right. Mr. Dovey votes for Cameron Jenkins.
It's a tie. You know, it's a tie.
Mrs. Karen Minugian votes for Mr. Jenkins. Ms. Darmo votes for Mrs. Tursich Keely. Mr. Cameron Jenkins votes for Mr. Jenkins. Mr. McLaughlin votes for Mrs. Tursich Keely. Mr. Phil Jenkins votes for Mr. Jenkins. Mrs. Tursich Keely votes for Mrs. Tursich Keely. Mr. Caligwarre votes for Mrs. Tursich Keely. So we have ended in a tie and it will go to the county.
All right, so what I'll do is the next steps I will take is I will share this information with the county office, including every round of voting, every vote. So Vicky and I will, will talk about it, compare notes. To make sure we have everything correct, every round of voting, every single vote, our board policy, the, the information from our solicitor and say, here's what we have. And the Executive County Superintendent will deliberate on it and make whatever decision they make. Now, I have, this is my 19th year in public education, 12 years as an administrator, seventh year in Delanco. I actually have not witnessed this before, so having not witnessed it, I'm not experienced with how the Executive County Superintendent makes that determination. But it's something I'm certainly going to be discussing with our solicitor and with the county office ASAP.
Well, you think, do you think maybe that he'll drop everything else and this will become the, the number one thing on his plate?
Well, probably not, but I, I, I would most likely get a response within a week. The county office is very good at helping districts with any issues that we're facing, you know, if we, if we reach out to them. So the challenge in this right now, though, is we have a brand new Executive County Superintendent that was just put in place prior to winter break. We've actually had three Executive County Superintendents over the past year. The one who left became one of the deputy commissioners, I believe, Darrell Minus Vincent. Then we had an interim and now we have our, our new Executive County Superintendent, so.
Who is that?
Steps will be taken.
Who, who is the new county super?
The, the, the new Burlington County Executive County Superintendent. Honestly, I haven't talked with him enough to, to even like really know him yet. But I, I, I have to look back through my email because it's only probably been about a month to say, well, here's his name. But prior to him, there was an interim. Her name was Hernandez Mono. So then, let's see, let me, let me look this up. What, Vicky, did you have the name?
I do not.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking it up because he's literally only been there a short time, so let's see. And Harry, I know you've been in the education field for a number of years, you know, you might, you might actually, you might know him.
Possibly.
Is it Ray Marini?
That's it, yeah, Ray Marini. Yeah.
I think so. How's the last name?
I'm not familiar with him. I actually haven't interacted with him yet. I've known Darrell Minus Vincent to be Executive County Superintendent for years already. years already. Uh, then we had Yasmin, uh, for just a few months and now it's Ray Marini. Yes, thank you. Uh, so.
It's the last name?
Marini. Spelled M A R I N I. Raymond Marini.
Oh, cousin Ray.
But anyway, Ray Marini, who I have yet to meet or even really truly interact with yet because of the circumstances with him just being put into his office recently. I'll be reaching out to him right away and we'll, we'll figure this out.
Great opportunity to get to know him.
Absolutely. But still, as I've said to the board, it's, I do see it as a shame. It, this is an opportunity for there to be a local decision made and it's going to the county office to someone that I, I don't even know that none of us know. He just arrived. So it's, um, that, that is a shame. And, and to me, a loss of an opportunity for local control over, over what happens. So true. Could we move on with the meeting though?
Yes, we can. So the newly elected president will now take the floor. So Mrs. Karen Manugian, I turn the meeting over to you.
Thank you so much. So we'll start with the approval of the following reorganization items. Now, do you want me to read this in its entirety, or do you want me to read, um, letter A and then just say, because it's sort of ridiculous amount of information.
A, and then when you get to B, you can just start on page two, the, uh, now therefore be resolved.
Okay. Okay. So A, appointment of the following, Victoria LaSalle CPA as board secretary, Joseph Mersinger as Assistant Board Secretary, and Victoria LaSalle CPA as Joint Insurance Fund Delegate. B, appointment of official professionals. Now therefore be it resolved by the board as follows. A, one, a professional services contract is awarded to the listed providers for the services for the period commencing January 6th, 2021, through the 12th month period thereafter. The board secretary is authorized to execute, um, a contract with them for the same. Three, notice of this award shall be published in the official newspapers of the board as required by the Public School Contracts Law, P S C L, and for a copy of the contracts for the services shall be maintained at the board offices and available for public inspection. List of awarded professionals, Parker McKa as school solicitor, labor negotiator and bond counsel. And Company LLP as school auditor per peer review through, uh, for 2017. Laura Bruno, M.D. as school physician, Garrett and Architects as architect of record. C, designate Burlington County Times and/or Courier Post as official newspapers and for New Jersey Cooperative Bidding Program bid requirements, Ashbury Park Press. D, designate Investors Bank as subsidiaries with president, vice president, business administrator and superintendent as signers on accounts as assigned. E, adoption of resolutions setting the regular meeting, monthly meetings on the second Wednesday of the month at 7:00 PM in the cafeteria of the M. Joan Pearson School with exceptions noted on attached exhibit, exhibit C. F, designation of place for the posting of meeting, meeting notices to be the M. Joan Pearson School, the Walnut Street School, the Board of Education Office, filing written notice with the clerk of Delanco Township, sending notice to the board's official newspapers and the annual notice to be advertised in the board's official newspapers. G, read- readoption of the existing board policies, curriculum for grades K through eight and textbooks for grades K through eight currently in effect. Each readoption of existing contracts and agreements. I, appointment of James Hizer as the district qualified purchasing agent with awarding of contracts up to the threshold of 44,000 and quotes up to 66, 6,600. Appointment of the superintendent as the affirmative action public agency compliant officer for matters relating to students, staff and visitors. Appointment of the business administrator for, as the affirmative action policy agency compliant officer for purchasing matters. Now, appointment of the superintendent as the district 504 program officer. Appointment of the superintendent as the school safety specialist. Appointment of the school nurses district attendance officers. Appointment of Pearson Guidance Counselors as substance awareness coordinator. Appointment of the Pearson Guidance Counselor as the district homeless liaison. Appointment of the Pearson Guidance Counselor as the 504 Coordinator for M. Joan Pearson Elementary School. Appointment of the Walnut Guidance Counselor as the 504 Coordinator for Walnut Street Middle School. Appointment of the superintendent as the district anti-bullying coordinator. Appointment of the Pearson Guidance Counselor as the anti-bullying specialist for M. Joan Pearson School. Appointment of the Walnut Guidance Counselor as the anti-bullying specialist for the Walnut Street Middle School. Appointment of the Director of Facilities as District Asbestos Management Officer. H, excuse me, A, H E R A Coordinator, indoor air quality designee, integrated pest management coordinator, district right to know officer. Appointment of district custodians of records, superintendent for super, for student and personal records, business administrator for financial and government records. Approval of procurement of goods and services through the following cooperative purchasing agreements, Burlington County Educational Services Unit, New Jersey State Contract Educational Services Commission of New Jersey, Hunterton County E.S.C. South Jersey Technology Partnership, New Jersey Edge, and the Educational Data Services Consortium, Camden County Educ- Educational Services Commission. Approval to establish petty cash accounts. $100 managed by the superintendent secretary with a maximum payout amount of $50 and reported on a monthly by voucher, excuse me, on monthly by voucher. $100 managed by the administrative assistant with a maximum payout amount of $50 and reported on monthly by voucher. Approval of payments and line item transfers as necessary between the Board of Education meetings with the approval of the superintendent and business administrator, and that such payments and transfers shall be reported to the Board of Education, ratified and recorded in the minutes and then of the next regular meeting. Approval of the chart of accounts, exhibit D. Now we're going to, um, look at the appointments for some liaison, um, positions. Uh, we have the appointment of someone as a delegate to the New Jersey School Boards, an appointment of someone to the delegate of the Burlington County School Boards, an appointment of someone to the Delanco representative, to be a Delanco representative on the Riverside Board of Education, and another individual to be appointed as a liaison to the Delanco Township Committee.
So now that we're there, Mrs. Karen Manugian, I want to share with the full board, uh, the results of the survey when it comes to liaisons specifically, because the liaisons can be selected tonight by the president depending on, uh, who has expressed interest. So when I look at the spreadsheet that was generated from the survey, uh, when it comes to the board liaison, uh, to Riverside, there was a definitive yes from Cameron Jenkins. And the maybes from Vince Calligwar and Phil Jenkins. So that, those are the selections for that liaison. And so, Mrs. Karen Manugian, if you want to decide that tonight, you absolutely can. Otherwise, it, it can wait, but, but I will say, um, that that we have a sending-receiving relationship. So if we appoint somebody today, that person can participate in Riverside Board meetings right away and their first meeting is tomorrow.
So then I would nominate, uh, or appoint Cameron Jenkins into that position since he was the definitive yes.
I have, I have a question about that. Um, from what I know, Cameron Jenkins has an internship with the, I believe, the IT department in Riverside. Uh, would that be seen as a conflict of interest?
It's possible that there is a conflict of interest, however.
I'll delay my intern.
You have to say that again, Cam.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
We can now. Could you say that again?
All right. My internship with the Riverside IT Department ended last month on the 18th, so I am no longer attached to the Riverside School District as an intern.
Okay.
Even if you were, Cameron.
Before Cameron, when, before you were in that position, did you check with our, um, school board representative, New Jersey School Board to see if that was a conflict of interest working there? Did you check about that?
Mrs. Darmo, just to explain, uh, he was not in a paid position, uh, for Riverside. Uh, he was not.
From what I understand, unpaid is, I believe, also a consideration.
Uh, if you would allow me to finish, uh, he was in an unpaid position. Been to any contract with Riverside. Uh, so based on my interpretation, I would not see a conflict with that. And not only that, he said that the internship is finished, uh, as of a certain date, so.
So again, uh, Cameron's non-conflicted and I would appoint him as the, um, representative on the Riverside School Board from Delanco.
Thank you, Mrs. Karen Manugian.
I just have a general question, not, uh, specific to anyone in particular. Uh, I don't, Mr. Adams brought this up. Um, we had our, um, ethics training with him. If there is a board member who is conflicted, could other board members? Are, we should know about that, should we not, since it's our, um, we have the responsibility to make sure the district as a whole is run well. Shouldn't we know if there are board members who are conflicted?
Are you referring to general conflicts of interest in any way?
I'm talking about someone who, they work for a company that the company has a contract. I'm, I'm asking in general, not about anyone in particular, that they have, uh, they work for a co- a company that has a contract with the school district. Should board members be aware of that since we need to make sure the district is well-run?
Well, I mean, you're asking a question that I'm not capable of answering when you say should board members know something? Simply because we have the School Ethics Act, which with board members filling out school ethics forms each year, administrators fill out the same forms. Uh, it's, it is certainly not my place to analyze and review those forms. Those are reviewed at the state level.
But at the local level, whose responsibility is it to make sure that a board member is recusing themselves when they need to? Whose responsibility at the local level is that?
The, it's the presiding officer's responsibility during a board meeting to conduct the meeting. So if a president is aware of a board member being conflicted due to a contract or something of that nature, the president needs to preside over the meeting and determine whether that board member can participate or not, depending on.
Put a, a fine point on it. Board presidents, it is their responsibility to know if a board member needs to recuse themselves. And that is public knowledge if there is a conflict of interest, since all board members have to to, uh, reveal any conflicts of interest. The board president should know that, correct?
I suppose. I mean, it really depends on when it comes up because the conflict of interest really depends. So for example, you know, if, if, if someone has, is working for a company, uh, it's, you know, that, that company, the, the board president might not know where other board members work and so on and so forth. The school ethics forms are, are collected at the state, at the district level, but then also reviewed at the state level. So it's, I mean, I'm not going to say that it's not the responsibility, but at the same time, um, when it comes to a conflict of interest, I think it's a process of everyone learning, you know, what, what has to happen with this situation. There is no board president that is going to say, well, I'm the authority on this and I know exactly what to do in a conflict of interest situation. So it would be a process of me, uh, it would be Vicky, it would be our school boards rep, it could be our solicitor saying, here's how we proceed with something like that, depending on the nature of, of what's happening.
Okay. And did you want to review that information regards, was there anyone specific that did stand out in regards to being a delegate to the school boards?
So for New Jersey school boards, uh, we had Harry Litwack given an effect yes that he wants to serve in that role. Uh, we had a number of no's. Uh, we had maybes from Catherine Tursich Keely and Phil Jenkins.
Okay. So if Harry was the definitive yes for those specific positions, I would like to appoint him as the delegate to the New Jersey School Boards and to, as a delegate to the Burlington County School Boards.
All right. Does that mean those reports would be getting shorter?
So we, we can touch on that as soon as we, I, I think we should just finish this one out. And did we have a definitive, um, feat, some definitive feedback in regards to the liaison to the Delanco Township Committee?
So we had some no's. We had a handful of maybes, but, uh, we had one definitive yes for liaison to Township Committee, and that was Catherine Tursich Keely.
Well, then I would, um, appoint Catherine to that position as the liaison to the Delanco Township Committee.
All right.
Thank you. And, um, so in speaking on that, what I'm going to recommend, um, that each of the individuals do as delegates or liaisons to those positions would after your said meeting, that you write up a quick synopsis of what occurred so that you can, and you would send that via email to Joe and Vicky. And then, um, that's something you can speak on at the meeting. That way it's a quick summary of the events. It's not something that, you know, goes long for either, um, sector that they're going to be representing. Um, and that way it's, it's pretty thorough and it'll be timely because they'll probably remember right from that moment.
Sounds like a great solution.
I mean, the Riverside, the, the young individual who normally represents Riverside does the same thing. So I think that it's only fair that we ask everybody to do it. It seems to work well.
Would you, would you mind just like summarizing what you would like in a, I don't know. I guess it'll be in the minutes afterwards, but.
Yeah. So there, no, like if you go to the meeting and you're sitting there and there are some fine points that you feel that are important enough to bring back to the, to school board, absolutely do so to put those in your, uh, in your report. You don't have to go and be like a reporter of the minutes whatsoever. That would but definitely, you know, important, um, pieces of information that may or may not impact our school board or just like some good points that you heard that you find that would be valuable to those listening. Thank you.
And, uh, Marissa, you had said that they should send it to me and to Vicky. And what we would do is disseminate that to the full board because, uh, as I've mentioned to board members over the years, that when you send email, when you as a board member send emails to the full board, you run the risk of creating a quorum that is not a, an advertised meeting and, and it can create issues. So we, uh, we like to avoid that.
Correct. Okay. So then I'll move on to the next part of this and continue reading on on this very lengthy approval. So NJAC 6A colon 32 hyphen 3 dot 2 requirements for the Code of Ethics for the District Board of Education Members. One, each District Board of Education shall discuss the School Ethics Act and the Code of Ethics for School Board Members pursuant to NJSA 18A colon 12 hyphen 21 as follows, at a regularly scheduled public meeting annually. Adopt policies and procedures regarding the training of District Board of Education in, in understanding the Code of Ethics and provide documentation pursuant to D below that each member of the District Board of Education has received and reviewed the Code of Ethics. Each member of the District Board of Education shall sign an acknowledgement of receipt of the Code of Ethics for School Board Members contained within NJSA 18A colon 12 dot, or, hyphen 21 as follows. This acknowledgement of receipt requires each District Board of Education member to read and become familiar with the Code of Ethics distribution of Code of Ethics acknowledgment forms for signature. I make a motion or I'm asking for a motion for the approval of these items.
This is Phil. I'll make a motion.
Anyone would like to second that?
I'll second Cameron Jenkins.
Are there any questions or comments?
I have some comments, uh, just a couple. Relatively small concerns. Just want to get this on public record. I think, so I have some concerns with the board policies. And I, I know that it's been mentioned a few of the past, you know, past few meetings that we may be amending some board policies coming up. I'm not sure if I'll be on the policy committee, so I just want to mention two specific, uh, concerns that I have. One is the current board policies, uh, basically prohibit us from posting on social media anything related to school business, which I think is not a good strategy generally. I mean, I think it's not a good way to relate to the community. So I think we, we should do is discuss some guidelines and then agree on some guidelines for how to post on social media. Though, just throwing it out there. And then my second uh, issue with the board policy or a place where I, I can see some possible improvement is that, um, I'm concerned about information flow within the board. And in particular with the, the chain of command when it comes to communicating with the public. So right now, if we go by the, by the letter of the, the board rules, every email that I've received as a board member should be forwarded to the superintendent and then I let the superintendent respond. And so I'm, my hands are kind of tied in the way that I communicate with the public. So I think. So I think those things are worth discussing, either as a whole board or in the policy committee. So it won't keep me, keep me from voting to, to existing policies for the new year, but I just hope those issues are addressed when they come up in the next few months. Thank you.
Absolutely. We can definitely look at that and they'll be touched on more with our ethics training as well. We'll go into in-depth with that information. Any else? Questions or comments?
I had a comment about the point about the posting of the meeting notification. I just was wondering if it would be possible. I know the township owns the bulletin board over by the 711. But we do send the information to the township if maybe it would be possible at some point to post a list of the meetings planned out for the year so that it's up for the public to see in a common area.
Vera Dharma with a comment when you're ready.
Wait, can Catherine, I'm sorry, is there such a question? I, I missed that where you said you wanted it posted, where you thought it should.
There's a bulletin board at the 711 in like central Delanco, if there's a central Delanco. At the Camp Meeting Grounds, that's what it's called. Yes, the Camp Meeting Grounds Shopping Center.
I think it's like right on the wall of the 711, correct?
It is. Yeah. So there, that's where they post all of the town updates for like yard sale day and township committee meeting information. And so it's just a general place people look for information for a town.
Yeah. I mean, there's, there's nothing preventing us from putting a courtesy posting there. It's not a required thing. Similar to my email, I send an email to all of our recipients about board meeting. That is actually a courtesy. Technically not required to do that. But yeah, I mean, I, I don't see an issue with it at all. I mean, the, the information out to the community, the, the more people are informed and educated.
More information is that.
That's right. It's a great idea.
Okay, Vera Dharma, are you ready?
Go ahead.
Okay. Looking at the list of awarded professionals, Parker McKay, Bowman and Garrison. I was looking over the minutes from, all the posted minutes from 2015 to 2020. We've had these same professionals for at least five years and probably more. I asked in a board meeting, I, I sort of depend on Vicky and Mr. Mercer to guide me. I feel like I can't do that anymore. These, these professionals have yearly contracts and we should have been, we should put them out for bid every year because they have yearly contracts, not every three years. This district is in a financial crisis and we've had this same auditor for I don't know how long. Does anybody know how long we've had these professional services? 10 years, 20 years? Does anybody know?
Vera.
I want, I, I want these people to be out for bid every year, not every three years.
It's been a long time. Vicky and I did talk about this, just so the whole board and the public are aware. I, what happens, and you're talking about costs. What happens is when we put things out for bid, we, we get a, a high quality of service from the companies that we work with and we do look at the bids. I mean, we're certainly not saying, well, you know, our, our business is going to the highest bidder. That, that's not how school districts operate. So when it comes to the bidding process and when it comes to what we're paying our professionals, a perfect example of this is the school physician, which we had a school physician for a number of years that was basically doing it pro bono for the district, basically. That was questioned by community members. Then we said, he's basically doing it for free. And there were people saying, well, put it out for bid. Well, we put it out for bid and because he actually stepped down from the role, we put it out for bid and now we're spending far more than we ever did. So I'm not saying that we shouldn't put things out for bid, but, but sometimes you've got to be careful what you wish for when it comes to putting things out for bid and thinking we're going to save money. Sometimes we don't and that, that is a reality.
We are in compliance with the law and historically Delanco has done, gone out for bid every three years. So this is year two of that process.
So three, two, two years ago, we called for bids for this particular contract and these came back as the.
So right. So last year was the first year of it. This will be the second. If, if bids come back, and I had answered this in the email, if it's come, if, if they come back with their contract and they can't do it for the same price or they want to change something material in the contract, then of course we would go out for bid to see, you know, what we can get at that point. Harry, we can't hear you.
Right. And click on the blue.
Here we go. Here we go. Okay. Wouldn't it be that every year there would be another third year coming up? Then in other words, this year there would be approximately a third of our three-year contracts coming up? Or is it every three years, they all come up at the same time?
You would put them all out on the same year and then?
What I'm saying is that what we've done traditionally so that all of them do line up the same year as opposed to like school board members, you know, there's nine of them and every three year, you know, every.
It's, it's like that. So, yeah, so they do. So we put out an RFP once every three years. The, the contracts are all one-year contracts. So.
Okay. And am I correct in assuming that for some of the jointures now that we're even looking at and some of the associations, buying groups, that those are, there's benefits to having them be three-year or five-year or whatever the term is for the economic impact to be of any circumstance to us?
Are you talking about the, the consortiums?
Yeah, yeah. In other words, they, they don't operate necessarily year to year. You can't necessarily, I mean, you, you can't set up businesses like that. I mean, you can, but that's not the way that you can operate with ongoing businesses. You, you want them to be there for more than just each year. You're not necessarily, it's not a benefit to have a, a lower person come in and do something that they're not, you know. They may be trained to, licensed to, but they never worked on this equipment or provided this service for your, for our district.
For those, we're a member. And, and once you're a member, you're a member. And there's no fee for those.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. I mean, it just would seem that, then it would mean next year is the year that to really look at who we're doing business with, if there's any need to change. Would that be a fair?
I'm sure they'll start reviewing the contracts in preparation for that bid. That's my guess. But um, so in regards, so then we need to, if there's no other questions or comments, then we'll do a recall vote.
Yes.
Vicky, is it okay if I do mine at the end where I split it?
Sure. If, if, if the board's okay with that, I'm okay with that.
That's fine.
Okay. Mr. Cowyire.
Vote no.
Mr. Dovi.
Oh, you're on mute.
The upper right.
Lower left on mine. Can you hear me now? Yeah. I vote yes.
Mr. Cameron Jenkins?
I vote yes.
Mr. Phil Jenkins?
Yes.
Mrs. Karen Menugian?
Yes.
Mr. Litwack?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mrs. Tersich Keely?
Yes.
And Ms. Dharma?
Before I vote, I'm just going to say my no votes are because I have no confidence in how this district is handled financially. My no votes are for A, B, D.
Wait, wait, I want to get your comment down first. So hold on one second.
Yeah, financially they are screwed up.
Okay. So your vote?
A for apple, no, is A for apple, B for boy, D for dog, H for horse, I for ice cream, X for x-ray, Z for zebra, double A. Those are no.
Okay.
Ready for yes?
And the others.
Okay.
C for cat, E through G, J through W, Y, double B through double F.
Okay. So your no's are A, B, D is in David, H, I, X, Z, double A.
Correct.
Okay. And then yes is C, E through G, J through W, Y, double B as in boy, through double F.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. The motion carries. And then we'll go now to routine matters and, and the approval of minutes of December 9th, 2020, regular and executive session meetings. I need a motion.
Phil with a motion.
Second, anyone?
Second, Harry.
Questions or comments?
Dharma with a comment when you're ready. Bottom of page 16 in our board packet. The, it was a notation in the minutes, the board.
Maybe they could hear me. They're laughing their ass off.
Is anybody, is anybody need to be on mute?
Yeah, I'm sorry about that Vera. Albert, could you handle any of the members of the audience that might be off mute by accident?
Going to start from the beginning. For the bottom of page 16, there's the notation. The board discussed the length of professional service contracts. I don't feel that at all reflects what we discussed. What we discussed was I was very surprised that the board had no guidance about when we need to discuss contracts, that they're yearly contracts, that they go out for bid every three years. So that if I did want to question a contract for January, it was too late for me to do it. The time had passed. So now I, you know, for all new board members, just realize you will not get the guidance you need. We, we're on our own, basically. That's my comment.
Vera, with all due respect, I disagree with that remark, whether it's toward Vicky or myself. We have been doing the best we can under most challenging circumstances with a new BA who's doing the best she can when it comes to all of these things. So for you to say that you are on your own and that the board doesn't, or that the administrators don't provide guidance to me is false. I, I, I share many emails with the board. You, you have emails coming out your ears. So I mean, that's, that's my take on it, but no matter what, I, I just wanted to respond to that, that I believe Vicky is doing the best she can under difficult circumstances with our business office, COVID-19, difficult budget, brand new BA over the past year. That's all, part-time, working two jobs. So all I can say.
And you might be right. That might be the best that anybody can do, but I would like to find that out for myself.
Okay. So let's put this to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Uh, Dharma opposed.
Anybody abstaining?
I missed that. I heard.
Cameron said, yeah, Cameron said aye and Vera opposed. And is anybody abstaining from voting? Okay. The motion carries. Next, accept November 2020 secretary and treasurer reports, which are in agreement. I need.
I'm making a motion.
Thank you. Second, anyone?
This is Phil. I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
I have a comment when you're ready.
Oh, I'm sorry. Questions or comments? That's my fault.
Dharma with a comment when you're ready.
Sure. Good.
Okay. I was looking at Exhibit S in the board packet. There was a bill that was paid December 22nd. So these bills are already paid and now we're voting on it. So if we had any problem with a bill being paid, it's already out the door. So I'm not sure why we vote on that stuff. Like was, do you know what I'm saying?
No. Well, I, excuse me, could I, I don't know who you were addressing or just, but Vera, that's how business is done. I don't know how to explain it to you any other way than that.
Well, the reason, the reason I ask is because there was a charge, there was money that went out in the, when, when were things discussed? When would a board member have a chance to talk about some sort of payment?
The bill, the, the district gets the bill. The district pays the bill. That's.
Exhibit S is the bill list that hasn't been paid yet.
Yeah, you're talking about November, not December, Vera. Wrong month.
I see some, I see something in there. It said December 22nd. Am I looking at the wrong date there? Paid in December 20, December 22nd?
And I don't know what you're looking at. So.
So you're saying it was in November. It was paid in November.
I think that we were, we put the report out in November, but it was regarding payments for December, my guess.
So this is a general question. Maybe, I mean, I just don't know.
It could be when it was put in for payment.
Yes. Because this was, we're accepting the November 2020 secretary and treasurer reports, which is going to reflect a December 22nd payment that was put in effect.
So all of these charges were already sort of discussed, maybe in the finance committee agreed to. Is that right?
So December 15th checks were for payroll.
Yeah, it's, that's not, not all payments are discussed. Some, some are just payments that we make because we pay bills like Harry is saying, or, or we pay our staff and so on and so forth. They're not, they're not.
It's not a month by month.
The reason I'm asking this, and I'll just be straightforward so it'll be easier to figure out why, where I'm going with this, is, and I really didn't want to bring it up because I won't put out the name, but it involves a board member who worked for a company who the district does business with.
I replied to you on that email.
I don't remember you, and I checked my emails right up into the meeting. I don't remember this, this person saying, I recuse myself because I'm conflicted with that particular company. I never remembered her saying that.
There was no conflict there. She didn't have nothing to do with that.
But she works for that company and she herself in her relative disclosure.
So you don't know what that, what that was for, what that payment was for?
It says the name of her company and she works for that.
My statutory required bond.
This, that's the name of the company and she works for the company, correct?
It's a $500 bond. If she has nothing to do with it, then she's not conflicted. It's, there's no contract there. It's $560. It's required by law for me to have that and, and it's, that's all there is to it.
And she, she doesn't own the company nor does she benefit from it. It's a $500 to $600 expense.
She works for the company.
But.
I'm going to have to delve into more of this.
Benefited from a $600 bill to a company that she happened.
That's not what the ethics law says.
So she would have to just not, she would have to abstain from voting on that one payment.
Yeah.
I, that's all I uncovered.
So I guess Vera, what you're claiming though is that a board member who's no longer a sitting board member that cannot defend herself right now, whose school ethic statements we do not have in front of us because she very well could have put that on there.
He did. I have them in front of me.
I guess my question for you as a board member, again, with all due respect is, asking this question about a board member that's no longer sitting on. asking this question about a board member that's no longer sitting on the board, that may have voted on a $500 to $600 contract, that, that $500 to $600 benefited her in no way.
Mr. Mersinger, going forward, because she's not here, going forward, I need to be clear about what these ethics rules are. And when I asked you before about should the president know if there's a conflict, you did not give me a straight answer, but that's okay, because you don't know. And I will find that out for myself and I'll report to the board.
But I told you, I said that it's difficult for me to say what the president should or should not know, because the board president is a separate role from, from me. So when and it comes to the forums that are filled out.
Oh, my God.
The ethics are not going to be known to the public like.
I think about it a lot, like, oh, I can't get.
Vince, you're not on mute.
Vince, yeah. Vince. We're thankful for the children being here, seeing democratic process, because it's important for us to discuss topics. Absolutely.
And this definitely could have been brought up prior and addressed prior than during a time where we're voting specifically on these.
I did email about this, so that's.
Did Vicki, Vicki, I'm, you respond, did you respond? I feel like I was on some correspondence, but perhaps.
I had a lot of emails to reply to this week. I replied to a lot Monday night. I replied to some today. There was an Oprah request involved in that. I am working on that as well, and that's, that's where we are. So I did reply today and, and I understand that she was probably working and probably didn't see that one.
I just, I just don't see a need in attempting to discredit a former board member who served.
I am not attempting to discredit anyone. I am trying to be, I'm trying to understand how we know if someone needs to recuse themselves.
So in February.
That's a good question.
You do not know, and I will find it out, because I'm on my own.
You can find out in February when Jesse Adams comes to do more ethics trainings with the board.
Yeah, I will definitely ask.
Vera, you are more than welcome also to reach out to Jesse for, with questions, if you have questions about ethics or the, that actual day-to-day goings-on and how we go about things to Jesse. He will be more than willing, because that's his job, to educate you and provide you guidance in any way, shape or form.
And that's for the, that's also for the board members to know as well.
That's correct.
I'm sure that Marissa, as the new president, you'll be interested to know of any conflicts of interest to put Vera's mind at ease for future meetings.
Absolutely, absolutely.
It's important to know for the new board members that the, some of the information you want to know about how to be a good board member and a responsible board member, you have to take the initiative to learn, and it's through the School Boards Association at the county level, at the state level, and through Jesse Adams, who's your representative. So, you know, that's where these questions need to go. It's not the superintendent's and a business administrator's job to educate the board members to be board members.
Right.
It's the boards, the board has to have that responsibility amongst ourselves, and I think it's imperative, I mean.
What I can say is if anybody has any, Harry, I don't mean to interrupt, but if anybody has any questions regarding ethics or how things should be going on with our governing abilities and how we should act, please reach out to me. If I don't have the answer, I will personally reach out to Jesse to gain that information for you. You're never.
Well, no, no, no. What I'm saying is that I think it is incumbent upon everyone at their own basic level of personal ethics, business ethics, how they operate as a board member to, you know, seek, if they have a question, they should be seeking it with Jesse.
For sure. But if they feel uncomfortable making that first.
Or if they go to you.
I will do it for them as the president. I'll make sure to bridge that gap and, and help facilitate whatever needs to be done.
That's helpful.
Okay, so any more questions or comments regarding this?
Hey, this is, my name's Devin. I am a parent of one of the kids in the school.
One moment, wait, one moment. So I'm going to open up the public comment on agenda items after student recognition, and that's, during that time, you can actually talk about something that we've spoken about.
I don't need to talk about anything that you guys are talking about. I want just, for you guys to just do the student recognition. It's getting late. It's 8:40. What you guys are talking about is very frustrating for the rest of us parents listening to it.
You're 100% correct.
Yes.
That.
We're gonna hopefully expedite this next section and move along quickly so that we can get to.
Do you need to expedite it, or can you just deal with the kids and let us do this with the kids first? And then you guys can go on with whatever it is that you have going on, because this is very frustrating for the rest of us to listen to this.
You are the only one.
Yeah. Um, Joe, can we move the liaison reports until after student recognition and then quick vote on this and then jump, I'll quickly say hello and then we'll.
Absolutely. You're the providing officer. You can move that item on the agenda. Okay, let's, let's do it now.
Thank you so much.
Oh, you're welcome. No problem. I totally understand. So let's vote quickly on this. All in favor, please vote. Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Oppose, Dharma.
Okay, thank you. Anybody abstain? Motion carries. Quickly, I'm going to skip liaison reports. We'll address that later. Welcome, everyone. Hello. Thank you so much for joining us virtually this evening. I appreciate your patience this evening, as well as the nomination and sequential vote into this position as your school board president. I look forward to working and representing our school board as president alongside of our seasoned and newly elected board members, as well as our administrators and staff. With a new year, our sights are set high for positive growth and development, even considering the calamity our world is facing currently. I will work hard with my fellow board members to help go over fairly, promote trust and transparency, as well as facilitate proficiency to the best of my ability. With that being said, let's move this along. I will ask our superintendent, Mr. Mersinger, to begin the more enjoyable aspect of this evening's meeting, student recognition.
Thank you, Mrs. Kamenugian. I appreciate that very much. And I certainly understand that students have been waiting a long time to get to this point, to hear their name announced for student recognition.
Yes.
So without further ado, we're going to begin, we're going to begin with the younger students right now, and we'll move on to the walnut students after that. So for M. Joan Pearson Elementary School, we're very proud of the following students that were selected as Students of the Month. And what Mr. Conti told me, Lou Conti, the principal, told me, he said that these students have been showing great resilience, focus, hard work, and all sorts of positive traits during the COVID-19 pandemic and the virtual learning that, that we're doing right now. So we really appreciate these students for staying focused and working hard. So without further ado, in Mrs. Arangio's class, congratulations to Emiliano Perez. Next, we have Mrs. Crozier's class. Congratulations to David Janot Baptiste. Moving on to first grade, we have Ms. Smith's class, and congratulations to a student who's been here. I've, I've seen her on the screen, Maggie Ogden. Congratulations. Next, we have Mrs. Weller's class. The student selected was Jessica Wright. Next, we're moving on to second grade, Mrs. Ms. Lipinski's class, and that is Samer Walker. Congratulations. Next, for second grade, we have Mrs. McCann's class, and we have a student, Selena, and I believe the last name is pronounced she. That is what I understand.
No.
She said no.
No? How's it pronounced? Z? She?
Yeah.
Shea? Oh, all right, well. Selena, you can correct me. Tell us how it's pronounced if, if you feel comfortable, or mom or dad.
Sia.
Sia. Selena Sia. Thank you, Selena. Congratulations. Next, we have for Mrs. Barbara's third grade class, Riley Pallett. Moving on to Mrs. Fitzwater's third grade class, Parker Flanagan. In fourth grade, we have Mr. Stockton's class, Abigail Bemke. And fourth grade, Mrs. Wallace's class, that is Sienna Janik. Moving on to fifth grade, we have Mrs. Brendel and Mrs. Letton's class, and the student nominated was Jesmary Matos. Congratulations. And we have Mrs. Guckin's class finishing off Pearson, and that student is Kwan Duarte Herrera. So congratulations to all of our students, and thank you once again, Selena Sia. With that pronunciation. So that's Pearson. Moving on to Walnut. So Mrs. Noble, Casey Noble, the principal of Walnut, explained to me that these students are selected, just like we did last month, for different reasons, for, for positive things that they're doing in different areas. So we have two writers that were selected that have been doing a fantastic job. Those two writers are Morgan Rentson and John Salerno. Congratulations. We also have two mathematicians that were selected. So congratulations to these fantastic math students. That's Emily Claus and Hunter Bilowski. Congratulations. Next, we're moving on to the art. So this student has done a fantastic job in art. That's Franco Tapia. Most conscientious student, and, excuse me, most conscientious student, and that's, that's one student was nominated for this, that is Joshua Simon. Greatest perseverance. This student does not give up, even when it gets hard, and that is Matthew Roche. Next, we have the Walnut Whiz Kids. These students are like an all-around, I guess what we could say is that they're well-rounded, they're doing great in many different areas, and so we would like to congratulate Gianna Teet and Lillian Brisky for being the Walnut Whiz Kids. Next, we have the fantastic scientist for the month, and that is Sydney Greenage. Congratulations. And finally, oh, sorry, there's one more. Finally, we have the Advisory All-Star. And the advisory program that we do at Walnut has to do with social emotional learning to help kids when it comes to all sorts of different things, emotions, social interactions, relationships with each other, relationships with adults, and so on and so forth, all sorts of positivity coming out of that. So our Advisory All-Star is Kayla Arnold. So once again, congratulations to all these students. I also congratulate them and thank them for being very patient throughout this process, the democratic process of a Board of Education, voting, discussing matters of importance, and so on. So you've seen it happen. Once again, congratulations to our students.
Thank you so much, everyone. Thank you for your patience as well. It's greatly appreciated, and congratulations to every one of you. If you guys want to drop off, you can, but I'm going to continue on to finish up, but we do have public comment on agenda items in case anybody wants to comment on things before you leave. So we'll quickly touch on the liaison reports. Riverside High School. Anybody have any comment about that? Because I think Rose was the liaison for that.
For the student liaison, it would be Gracie Iwanicki, and so Gracie has not been able to participate in meetings for a number of months, but what I'm going to do is reach out to Riverside and, and, and talk to the advisor about that and, and see what happens. We do want to get Gracie involved.
Absolutely. The Delanco PTO.
Hi, Wendy Flanagan, Delanco PTO secretary. We don't really have much to report, except our next PTO meeting will be January 19th at 7:00 PM. An email will go out with a link to join us for that. So I hope to see lots of people joining and come out. Thanks.
Thank you so much. DISA, Recreation and Township Committee. Mike, is there anything great that you want?
We had a reorg last Monday night. It, ours only took an hour, so we're. The question that came up from Ms. Tressich Keely earlier, you just want the meetings, the school board meeting dates posted?
Yeah, there, we have a full agenda for the rest of the year with the planned dates.
Yeah. Anything else? Cause there's four bulletin boards in town, so I'll get, I'll pull it off your website and have it posted, so.
I mean, that, you could paper the town with it, because it's that's the business of the board.
They'll be knocking down your doors to attend this, you know, your, your, your school board meetings if they're disentertaining, so.
They can also watch the video.
Good year. Be COVID safe. We got a couple more months to hunker down here. Be careful. Vaccines are coming, so, but I'm glad to see the flickering flame of democracy exhibited by, by this group tonight, and the give and take and back and forth, and the questions and the answers and the research. So it's something that needs to be pushed up through the elective process, that we can get more people with the ethics and honesty and forthrightness and doing hear all the, those attributes on. So anyway, good work all, and keep the lines of communication open. Well done.
Thank you, Mike. We appreciate that. I'll open us up to public comment on agenda items. I think.
Also, Mrs. Kamenugian, we did have an online forum like we've had for a number of months. We did not have any comments or agenda or non-agenda items on, on that forum.
Okay.
Did the information, was that, was my turn up for that? For the county?
No, I, I didn't touch on that. I didn't see that come up yet, so I'm sure that there's, no, no, I didn't touch on that yet.
Closer to the end.
Yeah.
Okay. I always get them mixed up in those.
No, I know. It, it can be confusing for sure. Okay, so then I guess I'll, I'll close.
I think there is a parent who has, she's raising her hand.
Yeah, Lori Van Gendren. We received an email from Mrs. Thomas that our daughter Ella was going to be recognized tonight. And she wasn't, and I don't know if that was just an oversight. But I just wanted to bring that to the board's attention. And I, and I also just wanted to make a comment, though, that I do think it's an important process that you all are going through. I know it can be a little tedious for people who are used to attending meetings like this, but sitting on the planning board, I know that, that it's a very important process that you all are, are achieving with your back and forth and your, your dialogue and, and your, you know, being watchdogs over not only what happens in the school system, but how business gets done. And as a parent of a child in the school system, and two children that have gone through the school system, I appreciate it. I appreciate the time and, and the discussion that's taking place. So thank you very much for what you're doing. I know, I know it's a thankless job, but it is appreciated by parents of the system. So thank you.
Thank you so much.
Also, I, I don't have Ella on my list, Mrs. Van Gendren. I apologize for that. I, I received the lists from the principals, but what we can say is congratulations to Ella for being part of this board meeting and seeing the process like you're saying. And that means that she has perseverance and, and all sorts of other positive traits. And who knows, maybe she's a future Delanco board member. Never know.
I hope so. Thank you very much again.
Thank you. Okay, if there are no other comments on agenda items, I'll close. All right, and we'll move on to the superintendent's report. Mr. Mersinger?
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Kamenugian. I have tabs open with all sorts of things. The packet, the agenda. Okay, here we are. A motion is requested to approve the following items. Letters A through J on the superintendent's report, and I'll have, I'm not going to provide any other comments at this time, but that's it. I request a motion for those items.
Mrs. Phil, I'll make a motion.
This is Bob. I'll second it.
Okay, questions or comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Okay, Instruction and Program Committee report. Oh, you're welcome. So I guess I will read this. I believe that.
So basically, Marissa, you, you become the committee chairperson. No, I, I'm kidding, of course, but you, you have, read all the, you read all the committees right now, because we don't have any committee members yet.
Okay, that makes perfect sense. Not a problem. A, Special Education Classifications and Placements Confidential, Exhibit Q. And I'll move right on to the Finance. And I'll move right on to the finance committee report. A motion is requested to approve the following items. A necessary line item transfers for November 2020 exhibit R. B monthly line account certification for November 2020. Payment of bills in the amount of $547,971.06 and 6 cents. And I'm sorry, is there an amount that's supposed to be listed there to be distributed?
That was sent out last night.
Okay, I didn't see that. What?
That's because of the large gap in the, between the December, January, and then the February meeting. So when the mail came in on Monday, it was, it came in very late on Monday, so it was processed on Tuesday.
That's cool. What is the number?
I'm getting it now. I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry.
203,867.52 cents.
Okay, 203,867.06 cents. Exhibit S. Submission of the securing our children's future grant, Alyssa's Law Compliance and Security to the Department of Education in the amount of 202080, and affirmation of the availability of local funds should the total cost associated with the work exceed our grant allowance. And the Burlington County Insurance Pool Joint Insurance Fund distinctions earned by the district with financial award in the amount of $5,000. Elite Two Safety Award loss ratio below 50%, 10-year average loss ratio below 50%. Rodeo five bills of payments in the amount of $8,808.01 with check 2192 hyphen 2193 exhibit T. Nutriservice Financial Report for the month of November 2020 exhibit U. I need a motion?
I'm moved. Robert.
Thank you. And a second, please?
Second from Phil.
Okay, questions or comments?
Just one comment, Marissa, and this is for new board members. The joint insurance fund that we belong to, you know, we as a tenant, we as the school board got an award of $5,000 for doing the job very well. The schools do it. The township belongs to the JF also, and it's something that actually works out to be cheaper for the schools by belonging to the joint insurance fund. That's my only comment.
I have a comment regarding that joint insurance fund. We are also receiving an award for notifying the insurance company within 24 hours of any incidents. That was left off when they gave out the awards, and I emailed them and told them that I thought it was wrong. So we're getting either another 500 or $1,000 for that.
Awesome. That's great. Thank you so much for doing that. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Operations.
I was not, I was not unmuted. Can I give my votes now?
For sure.
Okay.
I vote no for everything except for letter E.
Is an elephant, is a yes?
Okay.
So Marissa or Mrs. Karen Manugian, I just wanted to go back to student recognition. So I had two lists for student recognition. One list included Ella Van Gendren, the other did not, and she was the only one missing off the list. I don't know if Lori Van Gendren's still on here or if Ella is still on here. She was very patient. She was recognized as a writer for Walnut, just as a couple of were. So.
Congratulations.
We could give her some kind of special treat for my mistake because somehow her name was on one list but not on the other. So Mrs. Noble, thank you for sending me that email saying, here's the correct list, because she, Mrs. Noble has sent me the correct list already, and for some reason, one name got deleted off it by accident. So I apologize. I take responsibility for that 100%. And we'll make it up to Ella Van Gendren. Absolutely.
Let's invite her back next month.
We should.
We'll make it up to her by not inviting her back.
The poor thing. That's in itself. Okay, in regards, okay, moving on. Operations and Facilities Committee Report, the Report on Maintenance Activities, exhibit V. Policy Committee Report, there is no report. Personnel Committee Report, a motion is requested to approve the following items. Updated Substitute List, exhibit W. Job Descriptions for Certified Staff Members Provided by NJ SBA, exhibit X. I need a motion, please?
Motion, Phil.
Second, Robert Dovey.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? All right, this is a roll call though, please.
Mr. Calligwar.
Yes.
Ms. Darmo?
Yes.
Mr. Dovey?
Yes.
Mr. Cameron Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Phil Jenkins?
Yes.
Mrs. Karen Manugian?
Yes.
Mr. Litway?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mrs. Catherine, Mrs. Tersich Kili?
Yes. Okay, motion carries. Board of Ed Liaison Reports. We have Riverside. I don't know if anybody would have any information, but Rose was our liaison previously for that, so. Joe, unless you have anything, if not, I'll just move on.
I'm just aware of their meeting happening tomorrow, which is why it's good that we have a new liaison.
How are they providing education? All virtual or?
That's actually an excellent question because there are so many different things happening throughout the county. The answer to that that I can give you right now is I do not know. The last, actually, the last that Robin and I communicated was this morning, but it wasn't discussed. We talked about other topics. So I, we can find that out. I'm not sure if anybody is fully aware yet if Riverside is virtual like we are right now, going back on the 19th, because every district has so many unique circumstances.
I'm sure Cameron can find that information out and let Joe know, and then he can let the rest of us know in any moment.
It was just, we talked about so many other topics.
Okay, and Harry, for New Jersey School Boards and Burlington County School Boards, anything quickly you want to report?
Yeah, there was a meeting on the 14th of December, the Cal Meeting, which is the county leaders throughout the state. There's another one coming up on the 11th of this month, but on the 14th, what they had was a, they had three people. One person who was both a board member and a principal and advisors for a program at West Windsor Plainsboro. And it really was all about secondary education, but some of the issues that they brought up, Joe and other people might find pertinent, Jermaine, was that because of things that the expectations that even same thing our eighth graders have of graduation and dances and parties and trips, whatever, that they have to change some of the rituals or make new rituals is what they were saying. And they had two students who were involved with doing that at a high school level and using the democratic process and had to have the students help them that to be somewhat self-governing and speaking truth to power and breaking down barriers. And they, some of the, I guess, that curriculum that's being looked at that evolved in a way from the Black Lives Matter about inclusiveness and trying to make sure that that students felt that they had some new rituals if we couldn't do the old rituals and having them help create it. And there are also talked about career testing, special ed, the bottom and the top, and the services that are provided under the federal law. Which is that the federal government is supposed to be providing 40% of the special education budget to the districts. And maybe not, they provide 18% that is the flow-through that comes. So you can blame the state all we want, but they're not getting the money from the federal government, and that may change as of some of the situation that happened today. And that's about it. And January 11th is the next meeting.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
And there's also, and some of you may have attended this in the past, at the county level, which is, Joe knows about it, the eighth grade, usually in the spring, the county meeting celebrates one eighth grade student from each of the 21 districts in the county and board members or parents interested.
I remember Alexa Karamanu being part of that.
Yeah, yeah, so that's, what may be doing is that the students would be doing a film, that we do a video. I just got that information today, so. And for the new board members, it's virtual, and you're more than welcome to be part of the county meetings.
So yeah, Harry, you're talking about the eighth grade dialogue, which is a great thing. We couldn't do it last year. And then this year, maybe it like, it'll take on, you know, a new form in.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
But I, just today, there was something sent when I received the information about that meeting on the 11 that it was also going to be quarterly, you know, that quarterly meeting. And if I didn't read it incorrectly, if I'm remembering correctly, it had to do with being, like, presenting a video that they would do it via video. So that may be something interesting. And once again, it ties into, I guess, creating new rituals of how to keep things active. So that was coming up, and then for the following year.
So also, Marissa, back to Riverside. I looked through my emails. Our most recent communication about their closure or remote learning is from December 7th, where they indicated that they will be fully remote until January 19th, just.
Okay, well, there we go. All right. If there's nothing else, we'll touch on old business. We have election, official election results. Mr. Dovey received 1,087. Mr. McLaughlin received 1,243. And Mrs. Tersich Kili received 1,254, and I'm terribly sorry if I murdered that as somebody who has a crazy last name myself. So I'm so sorry. Terribly sorry. New business, Board of Ed Sessions, provided by NJ SBA Representative Jesse Adams, as we were talking about earlier, will be on February 10th, 2021 at 6:00 PM, and it will touch on board ethics. Then we have another one on March 10th, 2021 at 6:00 PM for board member roles and responsibilities. April onward will speak of the development of the Board of Ed Communication Protocols and Norms. So all of those were important topics that were touched on throughout the agenda that we will be touching on as well at a further date in the future. Board of Ed Committees for 2021, we will be looking at that. I'm going to sit down and talk with Vicky and Joe to discuss the results of the surveys we put out and see where we're interested and we feel will be best fit. And then the Board of Ed Budget Workshops for January, February, and March of 2021. We'll make sure to bring that information to you once we have information from it. Are all distributions out?
Marissa, just about those workshops for the budget, just so the boards are aware, what it means is that we could potentially have extra meetings on the calendar related to the budget. Now, we already do have a budget workshop meeting that's on the calendar. But beyond that one that's already there, we're talking about possibly adding one or two more, depending on the need for discussion about really significant topics related to the budget.
Yes, and they truly are significant and impactful, so we certainly will need to meet and discuss quite a bit. Okay, any additional distributions that need to go out? I'm thinking no. I'll open this up to public comment or non-agenda items. Okay. Is there anybody? Because I only see one screen, so it's kind of hard to.
The person that was here before that was, she just wanted the, to let us know that she was waiting.
Oh, yes, correct. That is correct. If there's nobody that would like to comment on non-agenda items, I will close it. And then executive session, do we have a need to go into executive session?
So during a typical meeting, either Vicky or I will say that there's a need for executive session based on confidential matters. Personnel, student matters, legal matters, security, any, these topics are considered confidential and should not be discussed in public. But we did not have a need for that. We did not. But board members, if board members have a need for that, you as the presiding officers can say, okay, we will go into executive to discuss such and such topic. And what I'll do is send a link to the board members for that purpose.
Okay. Does anybody have any comment on that? No. Okay, so then make a motion or I need a motion to adjourn.
Cameron Jenkins makes a motion to adjourn.
Nice, Cam. Anybody? Second?
I'll second.
Thank you so much. Motion carries.
All those in favor of it, though?
All those in favor, I'm sorry. It was too close. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed to not adjourning?
As the new president, these board meetings are going to be an exercise in humanity for all of us, because, you know, I can count the dozen mistakes I made tonight, but you know what I mean? It's, I just, I want to welcome the new board members. Welcome you as the new president, even though we've worked together now for a number of years, and I do look forward to working with this group. We have very ambitious district goals that we put in place, and, you know, I know that the board wants us to accomplish those. I do. Our families do, our teachers do. So, you know, and it's for our students. So it's, I appreciate everything. So thank you.
Sure. Thank you so much.
Yeah, it's an honor to join the board. Glad to be here.
Honored to have you. Thank you. Bye-bye. Good night.